You turn your mic on, Mayor, please.
We'll call the city council meeting to order for September the 15th and give the invocation. They will have the pledge of allegiance to the Texas and the American flag, Ms. Wirth to then call the roll. Let's pause for prayer. Our Father, we're thankful that you've given us this day, and we pray that you would continue to watch over our community, keep us safe, and we pray that you would be with those that are continuing to minister to those that are affected by the COVID and other illnesses and sicknesses, comfort them and direct them and bring them back to good health. We pray for our country. We pray for the leadership and the decisions that are made as we move from day to day. Watch over us now through this meeting and give us the wisdom and the direction in all our decisions. These things are asking your name. Amen. You're on me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, the Texas flag. Ms. Wirth, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Joe McCombe.
Here.
Council members Roland Barreta.
Here.
Rudy Garza.
Here.
Paulette Juarez. Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Ben Molina.
Present.
Everett Roy.
Here.
Greg Smith.
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
Here.
City attorney Miles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and council, a quorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
All right. I did not have any comments that were given to me that were emailed in or called in on public comment. Do you have any?
No, sir. We received no written public comment and also no call-in requests either.
All right. But the opportunity is there, right?
Yes, sir. It's always there.
Yeah. A little earlier this morning, I presented a proclamation for the United States Constitution Week for September the 17th, the 233rd anniversary of the Constitution of the country, which was good. Nobody thought we'd make it this long. I'm a little concerned with what's going on now, how much longer we'll make it with what I'm seeing on TV, but we got a great city here and we're keep moving, plugging forward. All right, there's no public comment then. Mr. Zanoni, the city manager's update on city operations and comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. I have a few things to go over this morning with you, but let's have Annette Rodriguez, our public health director, give us a quick update on COVID-19 for our Nuasis County area.
Good afternoon. So, we're going to go ahead and get started with the public health update. Next slide, please. So, I wanted to compare the positives for Nuasis County with the other counties in our region, so I've put here Webb County. Nuasis County is at 19,746 as of yesterday. Webb County, 12,657. Hidalgo County, 29,500. Cameron, 22,100. Victoria County, 3,900. The state of Texas, almost at 700,000 cases. The good news is the active cases are a lot less because there's more people that have recovered, and so if you look at the recovered, 18,808 for Nuasis, 11,000 for Webb, 26,000 for Hidalgo, 18,000 for Cameron, 3,000 for Victoria, and 581,000 for the state of Texas. So, the difference is the active cases that are still left. The deaths, almost 400 deaths in Nuasis County compared to Hidalgo at 1431, Cameron at 834, and the state of Texas, 14,211. The total case for the state, the total number of tests conducted for the state of Texas is over 5 million tests. Next slide. So, we've all seen the cases by month, so very little in March, April, and May, and then in June, over 2,000 cases. In July, almost 10,000 cases. In August, 6,500 cases. In September, 860 cases so far. Next slide. The deaths by months. In April, we had our first deaths, so we had three in April. We had five in June, 168 in July, 177 in August, and 43 in September. Also, the daily average deaths for July were five, for August more, six, and for September, three. Next slide. So, the schools have opened, and so they all know that they have to report cases of COVID-19 to the health district, and they have been doing so. So, if you look at from the first week of classes, CCISD had 12 students reported positive, four staff. Toloso ISD reported three students. Flower Bluff ISD reported one staff, and Cal Allen ISD reported two students. I would like to say that the majority of these cases are virtual students, and so there's only been three that were actually face-to-face in school instruction, so the others are virtual. They still have to report them, though, because at some point, the virtual will go to face-to-face. Next slide. So, flu season will be starting October 1st at ends in May of 2021, so we know that the optimal time to get your flu shot is now. And who can get the flu shot? Anyone over the age of six months. Pregnant women and people with certain chronic health conditions can also get the flu vaccine. That's a question that we get asked often. Who should not get the flu vaccine? If you're younger than six months of age, don't get it. If you have severe life-threatening allergies to flu or eggs or any products that the flu is made of, then you should not get the flu vaccine. Next slide. Hospitalizations occur every year during flu season for flu-specific, so we worry about the hospitals becoming inundated with both flu and COVID patients this flu season. So, again, we're trying to encourage everybody to get their flu vaccine. Both COVID-19 and flu can cause severe illness and even death, so we're really worried about the co-infection with COVID-19 and flu, and we have seen one case of that. And it's unknown if the co-infection will increase the risk of severe illness of COVID-19. So, we also don't know when we're going to peak here in Nuasis County. Last year, we were peaking kind of throughout the flu season. Years prior, we peaked normally in mid-January or early February. The health district is ready for COVID-flu testing simultaneously. We have our assays ready. All the competencies have been checked off for our lab staff, so we're just waiting for DSHS to give us the green light, and then we'll start doing that. Next slide. So, the health district continues to formulate our plans to vaccinate the community. We did get notified this past week that there is the potential that we may get COVID-19 vaccine in November. That was all the communication that we received. We know that priority testing will be determined by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And we also are establishing partnerships to help with the vaccination. So, the partnerships are the hospitals will self-vaccinate their employees, the pharmacies will continue to vaccinate the individuals that go through the CVS and those other type of establishments. The fire department has also offered to help with mass vaccination with the health district. FQHC, the federally qualifying health center, AMISTAD, will also assist us in vaccinating the community. We're also scouting out various locations to administer the vaccines via the drive-through for safety purposes. Next slide. So, good news. The good news is we are seeing decreases in deaths in hospitalized patients. Last week, we had 22 deaths. This week, 15. Hospitalized has gone from 100 last week to about 80 this week. ICU has gone from about 50 in the ICU to less than 30, and our phone banks continue to see decreases in the number of calls, except this morning, we did have a little, you know, spike in calls, and we had about 20 people sign up for our drive-through tomorrow. So, we'll see what that brings us. So, continue to practice the three Ws: wearing a mask, watching your distance, making sure that you're at least six feet from other people, if not more, and washing your hands for at least 20 seconds. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm hoping one of these days, you just work yourself out of a job.
That's actually what we're trying to do every day.
Good. Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions? All right, we'll let you get back to work. Thank you very much.
Will do. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Annette. Okay, Mayor and council, just a couple of other things here. We know that on the city council agenda today is the budget adoption, and I just want to highlight for the community, and we'll probably hear more about it during the meeting, but today, the mayor and council will vote to consider approving the budget for the fiscal year '21 that begins October 1. And it is $1 billion, a little bit less than last year, but still slightly over $1 billion, which demonstrates we're a big city with a lot of service to provide to a big community. In this budget, some of the highlights is that there is no city property tax rate increase, no city property tax rate increase. There's no fee or rate adjustments, increases basically, none of those. There's no change in the water rate that the customer will pay. There's no change in the wastewater rate that the customers will pay, and there's no stormwater fee. We're going to be working on that in the coming year, so no new stormwater fee. So, we're mindful of the economic condition that we're in the midst of, given the COVID-pandemic. The budget still, though, is designed to address the community's top priorities, including streets, public safety, parks, and libraries. The budget includes almost $80 million for street maintenance. That's a big number, 80 million for street maintenance. And then in November, the community can consider $61 million in additional street work in the Bond 2020 initiative that'll be on the ballot. In that street maintenance budget, there's $1 million for the first time for concrete street maintenance. We know Richard Martinez is beginning that program. We're going to have a program now to maintain all those concrete streets that we have. And there's also funding in the budget to rehabilitate 14 miles of Ocean Drive, and we want to be looking at our calendars. We have a date scheduled for October 8. That's going out to the council, the mayor and the council. That's when we're going to do a groundbreaking. And we're looking at some T-shirts to be made. We're cornering this event, Revive the Drive. Does that sound good? Revive the Drive, right? So, look out for your T-shirt and that October 8 event date. The budget includes five additional police officers. That'll bring our total police strength of 456 officers. And the budget also includes funding for fire cadet classes. The fire department is expected to be at full strength, and this will be for the first time in a decade, that every position will be filled. And what that means is better service, but also a reduction in overtime spending and a healthier workforce. The budget includes more hours for library staff so we can better serve the public, and there's also two co-compliance officer positions in the budget to improve our code enforcement actions in the community. The budget processes, we know, included public input. We had five district-specific community engagement sessions, and through those, we made some adjustments to the budget based on across the city, preponderance of requests from the community. That included increasing the library digital resources for patrons. There was a big request for more library services, and as well as we're going to add a shade structure to one of our community parks based on input. Okay, so that's the budget, and we'll see more on it here momentarily in the agenda. Let me talk to you about the bond program. So, we have developed a user's guide, an informational guide, on the bond program, and right now, it's available online. We want to point that out to the community. In the coming weeks, we'll have booklets or paper copies that'll be distributed to us, and they'll be included at various locations as well. The bond package, as we know, is $75 million, and it will be considered by voters on November 3rd. The bond program will not require a city property tax rate increase. That $75 million can be done with our existing tax rate. The bond program includes 42 projects, and the majority are in streets, $61 million of the $75 million is for street improvements. $12 million would be for parks, and $2 million would be for public safety. There's a total of 42 projects that are roughly proportionally distributed across the city, so every area of Corpus Christi will see improvements from this bond program. So, the bond program right now is available online, and persons interested in accessing it can go to ccTexas.com/bond2020. Okay, so ccTexas.com/bond2020, and a nice color visual information guide is available. So, share that with your constituents in the community, and then the paper copies will be coming out soon. Okay, let me just spend a quick second here on three of our area development plans because we're still working on those with the community, and we do have some public meetings coming up, and I want to, they're a couple of weeks from now, but want to make sure the community's aware. And so, through the pandemic, our planning department has continued to advance public engagements in three of our area development plans. And as you know, the city is broken into nine planning areas, right? There's nine regional plan areas. Right now, we're working on three of those areas, and the first one includes Padre Island, Mustang, Padre Mustang Island area. We know that's in city council District 4. And the area development plan was launched earlier this year with the first virtual public meeting that was held March 26, and there was also an online survey that was conducted through April. Then the plan, like all of our plans, will help to guide future investment and development patterns on the island, so this, just like every other one, is very important. The second meeting for the community is going to be October 1st at 6:00 p.m., so a couple of weeks from now, but October 1, 6:00 p.m. The first one we had back in March was very well-attended, even though it was virtual. We're better at doing those now, so we expect a lot of people on October 1. And then in addition, a two-week online engagement tool will be available on the project website between October 1 and October 15 that'll allow the community to provide feedback on draft, planned concepts, and elements, right? So, that Padre Island and Mustang area want to be attentive to that. For more information on this one, the interested person can visit our website, which is ccTexas.com/. And then island is the word to type in after that, island. Okay, now down that way, we're also working on the Flower Bluff area development plan. That's also in city council District 4. And the first virtual meeting on that one was held on March 26, and the online survey went through April there. The second meeting is going to be held October 7 at 6:00 p.m., and then a two-week online engagement tool will run from October 7 through the 21st for that plan area. And information on this plan can be found on ccTexas.com/flowerbluff. Flower Bluff is the word to type in. Okay, and then one that touches several districts, districts 1, 2, and 3. The third one is the Westside area development plan, and the first round of public input was completed in February, and we heard a lot about increasing housing and retail options, increasing code enforcement, and providing better access to medical and health services. We're preparing to hold another advisory committee meeting and community focus group, and those will be later on, towards the end of the summer, early fall, and we'll keep you posted on those dates. But the work done to date and the draft material can be found at ccTexas.com/westside. So, Westside for that plan. Okay, so those three plans each have a dedicated website. Two of them, we have meetings coming up in October, and then the Westside will be coming up later on in the later summer, early fall. Okay, and then finally, for this Saturday, we're still doing the Save Fun Fits by the Bayside to keep people healthy, give them healthy options, keeping them outside and social distance. And so, we'll have one this Saturday as well. They begin at 7:00, but this Saturday, we'll have a 5K that begins at 7:30, and the 5K is free, but it's limited to 50 participants, and it does follow COVID-19 safety guidelines, so that includes health pre-screening before anybody can participate, the social distancing of six or more feet, and temperature check-ins before anybody can take advantage of this 5K that's free. Now, an important thing to note is that Representative, State Representative Todd Hunter actually sponsored the last 5K, and he's going to sponsor the next two. And in fact, he ran in the last two, and is going to be there again this Saturday. And he plays pretty well, by the way. I think if the first one, he plays second, so that's good, right? Yeah, but he liked it so much, he told the sponsor, our organizer, to let's have a couple more of these, and he was going to take care of all the logistics on it. So, come by and run with him and other people this Saturday at 7:30. The, let me just see here, the, let's see. I think that's it. In addition, you know, we still have the free classes, the Zumba, the yoga, and the V-FIT productions continues to help us, as well as our Parks Department. We have water and fresh fruit available also, sponsored by HEB, and the fitness activities are for all ages. So, come on by this Saturday, 7 to 11, with the 5K marathon, which you can register for beginning at 7:30, sponsored by Representative Hunter. So, Mayor and council, that concludes my city manager's report for this morning, and I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. You're getting a lot done in addition to all this COVID distraction that you've got, so keep up the good work. All right, next item on our agenda, anyone have any comments on manager's report? All right, next item on the agenda is the minutes for September 8th, entertain a motion for approval. There's a motion, and there's a second. Any comments on approval of the minutes? If none, all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next item is the board and committee appointments. We've got the job development and the corporate B. I think those basically are folks serving the same capacity, and if I'm reading the information right, the four folks that are there are all seeking reappointment?
Yes, sir. That's right. And as you stated, historically, the same members serve on the Type A board and the Type B board, so.
All right. Is there a motion to reappoint?
Motion to reappoint both Type A and Type B.
Okay. For the record, Ms. Juarez.
Actually, I'm not.
You're not?
I'm sorry, I'm not abstaining from all of them, so we can individually vote.
Yeah, I think she wants to recuse on Ms. Olivari's, correct? Okay. So, can we take the three?
I'll resent my motion.
Okay. So, we can just separate Ms. Olivari so she can recuse herself? That would be helpful.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint everyone to the Type A and B board except for Leah Olivari.
So, Summers, Tames, and Trujillo?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, that's Mr. Hunter made that motion, and Mr. Smith seconded.
Okay. Any other discussion? Did we call the roll? Do you want to just voice vote?
A voice vote would be, yeah.
All right, the motion is reappointment of Lee Trujillo, Robert Tames, and Diana Summers.
Correct.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm sorry, I'm not abstaining from all of them, so we can individually vote.
Yeah, I think she wants to recuse on Ms. Olivari's, correct? Okay. So can we take the three?
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay. So we can just separate Ms. Olivari so she can recuse herself? That would, that would be helpful.
I would like to make a motion to reappoint everyone to the Type A and B Board except for Leah Olivari.
So Summers, Tames, and Trujillo.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's Mr. Hunter made that motion, and Mr. Smith seconded.
Okay, any other discussion? Did we call the roll? Do you want to just voice vote?
A voice vote would be, yeah.
All right, the motion is reappointment of Lee Trujillo, Robert Tames, and Diana Summers.
Correct.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, on Ms. Olivari?
Somebody make a motion to reappoint Ms. Olivari, Olivari.
A second.
Motion made and seconded for Ms. Olivari. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And for the record, Ms. Juahardo abstained. So just to clarify, that's to appoint, reappoint these members to the Type A Board and the Type B Board, correct?
Okay.
Just so that's clear, because historically, they both serve on, the same people serve on both.
All right, the next one, then, Downtown Management District. The way reading it, Ms. Huerta, is that the district nominates the folks for the position, and all of these are seeking reappointment?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's with the Board's recommendation?
Right. So there's six vacancies representing property owner, agent, employee, or tenant, and stock owner. And per the Texas Local Government Code, directors, succeeding directors are chosen through the recommendation of the Board and then the approval of the Council. So the DMD is recommending the reappointments of Cheryl Lynn Boyd as the property owner, Raymond Janack, property owner Kristoff Q, Q's, I'm not sure how to pronounce his name, K-U-C-E-W-I-C-Z, Leslie Lomax, Janet Maxwell, and Cheryl Watzmeyer.
Move to reappoint.
Thank you.
All right, there's a motion and a second to reappoint members of the Corpus Christi Downtown Management District as recommended by the Board?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, then the third one is the Ethics Commission. We got three vacancies there, or let's see, I think it's three vacancies. We've got two seeking reappointment and one not seeking reappointment, so.
Move to reappoint Axel and Jones.
All right, there's a motion and a second to reappoint Claude Axel and Drew Jones. All in favors, anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, then there is one vacancy on that, and somebody, I think, was it this board that name is on here but withdrew because they got put on something else?
No, that was on the Type A and B, the credit gram. So on this one, all these people are.
All of these folks are eligible to start there.
Yes, sir.
All right, there's a vacancy and entertain nomination?
I nominate Ed Bennett.
David Bendet?
Ed Bennett.
Ed Bennett. Is that my on the right one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's Ed Bennett.
The first one listed Bendet?
Yes, sir, it's Bennett.
Anybody else? Any other nominations? All right, the nominations, MCs, all in favor of David Bendet? Do we need a motion?
Mr.?
Did you make a motion or nomination?
Ed Bennett, it's Bennett, yeah. Just want to make sure. You see Ed Bennett?
Well, I see a, I see a B-E-N-D-E-T-T, Bendet.
Is it on the other list? Oh, okay. Oh, Mayor, look at the next page. Page after that. You see the, the one we're talking about, Ed Bennett?
Oh, okay, it's Bennett Bendet then.
Well, there is the Bendet, but he's actually a member, so.
Okay.
That's where you're getting that name from, but the applicant is Ed Bennett.
Ed Bennett then, excuse me.
Yes, sir, okay, got it. So did you make a motion, Mr. Hernandez?
He's the only one nominated to make a motion to appoint Ed Bennett.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold second.
Okay, and I heard Greg, yeah, Greg had seconded.
All right, so Mr. Bennett will now join.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bennett.
Bendet on the Ethics Commission. So we got that done. Okay, consent agenda today is items 3 through 31. As a way, a huge number of these have been addressed before. We've got a couple of, they're on the consent, the T2 zoning cases. Do we have anybody that would like to have any discussion on the zoning cases? Or anybody on any of the other? Do you want to pull 7, 8, and 9 out, just handled separately?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mayor. That's on the budget and the tax rate.
All right, so we'll pull 7, 8, and 9. Anybody have anything other on 3 through 31 that they want, ask a question on or pull out specifically?
Yes, Mayor, like number 24 and number 26.
Excuse, what number? 31.
27.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. 31, that's correct. Ms. Juahardo, 31, 31?
27.
27. Okay, anybody out in the cloud have an issue they want to pull? All right, then I'll entertain a motion for items 3, 4, 5, 6, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 25, 28, 29, and 30. I hear a motion?
Second.
All right, there's a motion. Any questions or discussion? You need to call the roll or the voice vote, okay?
We can call the roll, I appreciate that.
You'll call the roll, Ms. Huerta?
So for passage of the consent agenda, with the exceptions of 7, 8, 9, 24, 26, 27, and 31, Mayor McComb?
Aye.
Councilmembers Molina?
Aye.
Roy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Juahardo?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes.
All right, let's just start, work our way down the list. Item number 7 is an ordinance. We, this is this, did we, by this, an item number 7 is an ordinance adopting the City Corpus Christi Operating Budget and the Capital Improvement Program Budget for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, beginning October 1, 2020, authorizing personnel compliments appropriating funds as provided for in the budget. Mr. Zanoni, you have any comment on this or entertain a motion for approval of item number 7? And do we need, this is number 8, no special wording on 7?
No, number 7 is the adoption of the budget. Eddie has a small presentation, if you'd want to see it, you don't have to, but.
All right, no, let's serious.
We'll, we'll go through it quickly, as the City Manager touched on most of the highlights there in the presentation. Next slide, please.
And this is the second reading, so we covered it last week as well.
I was going to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, go ahead, Eddie.
Here's, here's the, the main points in the budget. It does address priorities for the community and the Council, and we included the five new police officer positions, as was mentioned earlier, following the five-year plan to increase the force by 25 officers over a five-year period. We added additional funding for streets, the Ocean Drive being the big, big project that's being done, more, more money for maintenance of the concrete streets. Lobby area hours were added and code enforcement, two code enforcement officers were added. Next slide, please. And the total of the, the city budget is $1 billion. Next slide, please. This is the general fund slide, a slight reduction from fiscal year 20 by about 2.2% decrease in the, in the fiscal year budget. The general fund is 21, is $265.3 million. Next slide. This is just a little more detail on the general fund. The outer circle there in the black is the revenues, and as you can see, that property and sales tax comprise about 55% of our general fund revenues, or a little over $145 million. Next slide, please. This is the total budgeted positions in the city, a little over $3,400. Next slide, please. As the City Manager mentioned, there are no fee increases, no, no rate changes in this, in this budget. Property tax rate remains the same, and no changes in any of the utility rates, and no stormwater fee enacted. Next slide. This is just a slide on the EMS rates, showing you that the, the current fees will remain the same in FY '21. The recommendation is to stay with the current fees. Next slide. Some of the amendments done during the budget process. As a result of community input sessions, we did increase the digital resources for the library, and we also added a shade structure for one of our community parks. Next slide. Council had some discussion on the litter critter program, and we made the decision to, we need to discuss that further and come up with some solutions and a better program for the community, and we will return mid-year with, with our recommendation for that program. Next slide. These were staff amendments done. We went, went over all of these, I won't go over them. Lot of it is the debt, the debt changes that were made in mid to late July. Next slide. We did it, the top one there on the, in the general fund, in discussions with London ISD for an after-hour kit power formerly known as latchkey program at that school district. So we added funding for, it's a break-even program, so we added $45,000 in revenues and expenditures for that program. Next slide.
Let me interrupt you just a little bit. I mean, it's kind of a routine for the staff and stuff, but the public, really, I think, needs to understand, this council has reduced the bonded indebtedness over $100 million by actions of refinancing and doing some other things over this last year, two years. So I think, you know, we need to toot our horn a little bit that we've reduced.
Yeah, it was huge, and also the.
A lot of money.
Also, the bond rating was increasing in a very difficult economic situation, time that we're in with the pandemic. We still were able to improve the bond rating.
Yeah, we actually have had two, two different bond rating increases in the past 15 months, so that's a real good, it shows a strong financial position that the city's in.
Three or two?
Well, two, I think it's. Two, yeah. Two increases, but numerous, by three different rating agencies.
Yeah, right. I agree.
Anyway, that's good news. Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
That's fine. The capital budget totals $259.9 million. And next slide. This is just kind of where, where we've been, the, we had four budget, four council workshops, five budget input sessions. Last week, we had a public hearing on the tax rate and the budget, and we did the first reading la, last, last week, and this is the, the second and final reading for the, for the budget adoption. I'll stand by for any questions.
Anybody have any questions or?
I do.
Discussion items?
Right.
Ms. Juahardo?
Yes, so I just, I just want to make a comment and, and to, I guess, let us know if this is, this is correct. Our total, and I think it's extremely important for everyone to understand, the public and all of us, because on the onset, at the onset of the pandemic, when you guys were making, you know, forecasts as to how this was going to look, it looked like it could have been between a $14 million shortfall to the general fund, to the worst-case scenario, 21.2, somewhere around there?
That's correct.
And our shortfall is actually less than $4.6 million to the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think that's super important for everybody to understand, the council and the public, because our shortfall is less than $4.6 million, of which probably most of that will be reimbursed, if not all of it, through CARESAC's money, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's important, because I've, I've, I've heard people talk about how we have over $20 million in shortfall in the general fund, and that's not the case. We, and this is to your, to, to, you know, it's a gratitude to Peter, because you took proactive measures that you lined out and you let us know in terms of vacancies and, and the task force, I think it was, that you put together to really put some, some focus on how we're going to pull back right away, and this is why we have what we have. So from a 14 to 21 million dollar shortfall to less than 4.6, I think is extremely commendable. So I just want to thank you, Peter, your team, everyone, because that, that should be front-page news. And we're going to get that reimbursed to us through CARESAC's money. So I just wanted the public to understand that, so thank you.
Any other comment? All right, that completes your presentation, then?
Yes, sir.
All right, on number 7, it does not require any particular wording, Ms. Huerta?
That's right, Mayor, no, no particular wording.
entertain a motion on that. There's a motion to approve item 7, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, you want to call the roll, Ms. Huerta?
Yes, sir.
So any further discussion?
Just one comment and to kind of follow up on Ms. Juahardo with it, but, you know, this is a 6 million, this, this budget represents $6 million less in, in spending from the general fund on there, and it, it goes to, most of that is, is loss of sales tax revenue, right? On there, but we, as a city, we're adding five police officers, we're expanding the library, we're spending $80 million in street maintenance, and I thank you, Mr. Zanoni, for bringing this budget that does not limit what we're doing. We're doing more rather than less, but doing it for $6 million less. And this is $6 million less that citizens of Corpus Christi are paying in sales tax with it. So as we get into our next item, that $6.5 million, is that our, Mr. Houlihan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're, I guess, in our 2020 budget that we all just talked about, we're spending $6 million less, but we're extending our services and, and what the citizens feel. So really, I, it, it's a compliment to you, Mr. Zanoni, and I think all of our staff for pulling together and, and really taking us in the 21st century, so thanks.
Any other comment, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, this is still together, so I think if we can revise the motion to approve the operating budget by itself, and then the capital budget separately, would that be an issue? I know there was some discussion on it.
Right, we do have a option there to, to make a, council would make a, choose to, could choose to amend the budget ordinance to remove Section 6, which Section 6 is the only section that deals with the capital budget.
Do you have some verbiage on that?
Yeah, if you wish to amend, if you wish to amend the, the budget ordinance to remove Section 6 regarding the capital budget and capital improvement planning guide, it would first require a motion and, and a second, of course, to amend the budget ordinance to remove that Section 6. And then it would be, and then the budget would be adopted, and then you would have a motion approving the capital budget ordinance, and I have a copy to hand out to the rest of council if you, if, if that motion gets seconded and council adopts that motion to split out Section 6.
If I can ask, council wants to rescind his motion so I can make this motion?
Who seconded? It was Paulette.
Of what?
So you got, Mr. Smith? Okay, he doesn't want to withdraw.
Okay.
Okay, so, right now, the ordinance on the floor is to pass it as presented, which is the CIP and the operating budget.
Okay, if I, if I could make some comments on that specifically. And the reason I asked for that is because as the capital budget stands now, there's a lot of inaccuracies in it, there's a lot of, and there's actually one of the items I pulled will reflect that, including several information. I know Peter's work, knows it's a work in progress, and there's a lot of things it is, but as it stands now, I can't vote for it. So that's why I asked for it to be separated.
Can I just add to that, Councilman? Maybe it's just the word choice, but so the capital budget is a planning document, just like our operating budget is. And as more information comes in to include quotes from contractors when we put RFPs out, the final price can differ. the final price can differ than what was the estimated price.
No, I understand that.
I don't know if inaccurate is the right word, so much as it's a planning guide, it's not always going to match up to the final cost.
Well, I understand that and that's not what I'm referring to.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor for approval of item seven as presented in the, as presented on item seven.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Anybody out in the cloud? All right, Ms. Wirth, you call the roll, please.
So for passage of ordinance seven, Mayor McComb?
Aye.
Council members Molina?
Aye.
Roy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Hernandez?
No.
Hunter?
I can't vote for it because for the last five years, I have voted against the very next item, so I'm going to be a no.
So Mr. Hunter is no. The ordinance passes.
I won't get into it. All right, the next item then, item number eight. You want, who's going to make that?
Yeah, our finance director, Heather, is going to do a quick.
This is the second reading of this one too, right?
Yes, this is correct. Heather Holbert, Director of Finance. Can you please pull the presentation up for me, please? Next slide, please. So the proposed tax rate that we're bringing forward for approval today is sixty-six-four, six-two, six-four per one-hundred-dollar valuation, which is the same tax rate that was adopted for fiscal year 2020. We have two, we have three different rates that we discuss. One is the no-new revenue rate, which is the rate that would produce the same amount of revenue on the same properties as were included in the appraised rolls last year, which is sixty-three, six-three-two-six-zero-zero per one-hundred-dollar valuation. This is what was formerly known as the effective tax rate or the tax rate that effectively produces the same amount of revenue. We also have the evoter approval rate, which is also was formerly known as the rollback rate. And so this rate is the three-and-a-half percent higher than the effective tax rate and this is six-point-six-five-four-seven-four-three. So our proposed tax rate is below the rollback rate, but our evoter approval rate, but above the no-new revenue rate. So it will produce more revenue than last year, but the tax rate is exactly the same. Next slide, please. So just a visual of where your property tax dollar will go. Sixty-six-point-zero-five percent of the property tax value, or about eighty-six million, will go for maintenance and operations. And of that amount, four cents, or about eight-point-one million, will go to residential streets. And then thirty-three-point-nine-five, or about forty-four million of those dollars will go to the interest and sinking fund, which will provide the debt service for our existing tax-supported debt. Next slide, please. So what we, actually, we are at our next step. I apologize, I should have taken this out, but that does conclude my presentation. I am available for questions.
Okay, Mr. Smith. Wait a minute, complete your presentation.
It does.
All right, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. So I think we're telling the public, which is statutorily required, that we have an effective tax increase of two-point-one-six percent. What I don't understand is the math, so we have a hundred-and-thirty-million dollars in valuation. So that, you know, that works about a two-point-seven-million-dollar, if you read it on its face, two-point-seven-million-dollar increase, so to speak, yet as we go further in our budget, we're only estimating, what, seven-hundred-and-something-thousand dollars more in property tax increase, which the majority of that comes from annexation, not.
New valuations, yes.
Not valuation. So why do we have this disconnect, what we're statutorily, we're telling people we're raising taxes by two-point-seven million, when we're really, by the time you do the annexation, what's a hundred-and-thirty thousand?
I believe so, and I don't have those numbers.
Something, a hundred-and-fifty.
Exactly.
So I don't, I don't understand the math and I guess it would be helpful. I like to vote on stuff that I'm understanding, where we say, yes, public, we're raising your taxes two-point-seven million, but we're really not. Can you explain that?
Exactly, so part of it is the way that the legislature has written the tax code and those, these items that the council has, the scripts have to read, is that they consider it a tax rate increase if we're producing more revenue off the same properties as last year. And so that's where that two-point-one-six percent is, is that we're effectively raising taxes because we're producing more revenue on the same properties because those properties have increased in value. Then there's a whole another segment of the property revenue, property tax revenue that's being generated is off of annexation and/or new constructions and new properties. So that's not considered a tax rate increase, but that does produce more revenue that's able to be spent. So when you're looking at the ratification that's being brought forward, that's the seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, I believe, in new revenue. That's budget to budget, where last year, we actually collected less revenue due to collections percentages, I believe, than what was budgeted. So when you look at the differences between the budgeted amount, it's about seven-hundred-thousand dollars in revenue.
So when we told the public last year that they had an effective tax increase, since we didn't do it, we should be telling them, well, we fit to you. We didn't bump it as much last year as we said we did.
It's not that the tax rate wasn't set at that amount, it's just the way that the collections played out during the year.
It's just the semantics on there. As I saw one media, it's as clear as mud with it. But in effect, budget to budget, it's about one-tenth to one percent, not two-point-one-six. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification from last week, the seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, it did include new growth?
Yes, yes, it did.
Okay, so we're saying that the six, and I'll reiterate what Councilman Smith had mentioned, that the six-hundred-and-eight-thousand of it is from new growth, either annexation or new development, correct? So effectively, we're only raising the rates by the hundred-and-seventy-thousand, or hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars
Comparing budgets.
In terms of tax, so the real tax increase is a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the entire city? Okay, I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Any other comments on item eight? So we need a motion, everybody's got one of these, we need a motion that's, Ms. Wirth has provided the language, so entertain a motion to that language.
Subject to the comments I made earlier, on there, I'm just talking right now, not making the motion, but I'm going to read it because this is statutorily required. But we just heard that what we're actually doing is much less than what I'm going to be reading. So I move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate of point-six-four, six-two, six-four per hundred-dollar valuation, which is effectively a two-point-one-six percent increase in the tax rate. And this motion is statutorily required, this language is statutorily required for us. Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I just have one, again, one question for clarification, Mr. Legal Eagle. The, the existing tax rate is point-six-four, six-two, six-four, is that correct? Right?
Yes.
So my question is, how can we raise the current tax rate, point-six-four, six-two, six-four, and it be considered an increase if the increased rate is six-four-point-six-two, six-four? Do I need to get the legislature to explain this?
All I can say is the Texas legis, and for the past twenty-six years, I, the Texas legislature's method of calculating and requiring you to say you're increasing taxes, I would say that the Texas legislature has created a fantastic method for making all sides of the aisle in local government, conservatives and liberals, angry at having to say this language. It is absolutely misleading and incorrect, but, in its verbiage, but it is the mandate, state-mandated language and the state-mandated calculation.
All right, there's a motion on the floor that the existing tax rate is being increased to the existing tax rate, in layman's language. Ms. Wirth, would you like, Mr. Hernandez, did you have anything else or was that? Anybody from the hinterland? Ms. Wirth, would you call the roll?
So for passage of ordinance eight, Mayor McComb?
Aye.
Council members Molina?
Aye.
Roy?
Aye.
Excuse me, Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter?
No.
The ordinance passes.
Okay, item number eight. Who's going to make that presentation?
Item nine, Mayor.
Nine.
Nine, I'm sorry.
This is the.
We just passed it.
The last one here in this area. This is an ordinance to, the second reading of an ordinance to ratify the increase in property tax revenue. There is no increase in the property tax rate. The local government code provides that adoption of a budget that raises more revenues from property taxes than the previous year requires a separate vote of the council and that's what this item is, is adhering to that requirement. I'll stand by for any questions.
All right, any comments? Basically, I think Mr. Hernandez and Mr. Smith pointed out that that, the net effect is that seven-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand dollars more revenue this year than last, based on this, but it's six-hundred-and-something is the annexation and a hundred-and-something is just.
Almost eighty, around eighty percent of that is new growth of that, yes.
So that works out well. All right, is there special language on this one or do we?
No, sir, no special language.
The legislature must have been lazy and not provided that. All right, entertain a motion on item number nine. All right, there's a motion and a second on item nine.
Who seconded? Mr. S, did you, Mr. Smith or, I didn't hear a second. Thank you, I just, okay.
You had a motion and a second?
Yes, sir, now we do.
All right, any other public comment? Council comment?
I'd just like to reiterate, we just told the public we're raising your taxes by two-point-seven-million dollars in the last motion and now we're telling you we're raising it by seven-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand. This is required by the state of Texas. I hope this council and this management wouldn't be doing something like this otherwise with it if we weren't statutorily required. But, yeah, we got a two-million-dollar bust in here someplace. I like to see things reconciled, but we got to talk to legislature to do that.
All right, Ms. Wirth, you want to call the roll?
Yes, sir. So for passage of ordinance number nine on its second reading, Mayor McComb?
Aye.
Council members Molina?
Aye.
Roy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Barrera?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
Hunter? Mr. Hunter? Mr. Hunter? Okay, I'll mark him as absent. The ordinance passes. He's not there, I guess. He's not answering.
All right, and the next item that we got, we've done, we're down to item twenty-four. Who, who, Mr. Hernandez, was that your question or whose was that?
I'm not sure who pulled that one.
Mr. Hernandez, okay.
Yeah, twenty-four.
Motion authorizing a change order number one.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to kind of ask, and I was talking to Councilman Smith earlier about this and how we got to the, how the estimate was incorrect and what, can you describe what happened there?
Okay, number one, this isn't how we like to start projects off with a change order before you've even mobilized for the job. But what happened, we knew that there was a situation on this project that we're going to be adding fill and retaining walls over the existing soil column there and we knew there was deficiencies in that soil column, that the soil was likely to experience differential settlement and a lot of problems unless we took some steps to improve the ground condition. So we put an allowance in the bid and what that is, that's an amount that's hard-wired into the bid. So the contractors, when they submit their bid, that is pre-populated for them and we put five-hundred-thousand dollars on that. And then subsequent to the bid, they were to submit rarest proposals on how to achieve a performance specification that we had in the bid documents. We received two of those proposals, only one of which we felt would really achieve the desired improvements. Unfortunately, the amount for that work is above the allowance. So we're having to come back to council to get approval on that because any change order that's over a hundred-thousand dollars has to go to council. So the amount of this is the allowance subtracted from what their cost proposal is.
Okay, so the other question I have, this more finance side, is why is this coming from fund balances instead of the TERS? As I understand, the TERS is funding the majority of this project.
I can take a first stab at that. So what we did, this is probably the oldest bond project that we've got. It was actually originally a bond oh-four project.
Yeah, it was originally a culvert, right?
Correct. So what we did is we went back to that bond program to see if there was any encumbrances that could be released. And what we found on that, and this is the largest block of money that we were able to identify, was a developer agreement that had been encumbered for developer participation money, but something had happened that had never moved forward and so we released that encumbrance. And then we looked at other similar-type things that could be done to come up with the money.
Did you, did you look?
That's not a why question, that's basically what we did to come up with the money.
Okay, I can understand from 2004, but did we, was there a decision not to look at TERS funding?
I can speak for myself and the reason we did this, this was money that seemed to be available. It was strict bond money, which was an appropriate use of the money. To go and amend the TERS project plan, you've got to have a meeting of the TERS and there's just a whole lot more procedure involved with that. So this seemed like the logical place to come up with money.
Any other questions? All right.
Motion to approve?
Our motion on item twenty-four to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I'm opposing, I think this needs to come from the TERS.
All right, item twenty-four passes, item twenty-five is already done, twenty-six. There's amendment to Whitcap wastewater treatment plant.
Good afternoon, American Council, Kevin Norwood, Director of Water Utilities, standing by for questions.
Okay, this was, this was my, my team, Mayor. Now, I went and looked at the CIP and I didn't find this project under the number that you have in your agenda memo. In the agenda memo, you have it under eighteen zero-eight-seven-A. Is that correct?
I don't see it in the agenda memo, but.
That's in the, it's in the funding detail?
It's in the funding detail under activity.
Yeah, I see two-one-zero-zero-two.
Well, they, it's under project, waste, Whitcap wastewater treatment plant improvements, eighteen zero-eight-seven-A.
That's different.
Sir, and that's, that number doesn't exist in the nineteen-twenty CIP, nor does it exist in the twenty-twenty-one.
I'm sorry, sir, I was, I was looking at the wrong item. I'm sorry, sir, I was, I was looking at the wrong item. Have the page from, yes, sir, got it.
Okay, so are you saying this project is under 20087A?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have my CIP books, sir.
The funding you have under this is under capital reserve funds, so...
Yes, sir.
Converting this to CIP, is that from revenue bonds or pay-as-you-go?
This is, should be revenue bonds. It's in the reserve there, it's all revenue bonds.
So they're based, if it's under 20087A, which kinda corresponds language-wise in the description, there is no revenue bonds assigned to that in, for that particular project.
Okay.
Okay, so this goes back to my, my discussion.
It's an error on our part, so...
I know, I know. This goes back to my original discussion about why I didn't want to approve the, the CIP, because it's, there's a lot of mistakes in it, and whether it's just minor things or where funding is coming from, this is a public document that we're, that we're publishing to the public, that, saying where things are coming from, how we're spending money, and it is not correct. So what I'd like to, to have ask is a little bit closer attention to detail on when you do these agenda memos to make sure that they have some comparison to the CIP, which is where the information I look at, and if they don't match, then there should be some explanation into the agenda memo as to where the funding is coming from, how it's different from the CIP, or why is, or if it's more, a, a different amount. The original contract, I believe, was $49,000, and now it's, and then increased to 960,000 for, for design, and there's only 700,000 assigned to design. So there's gotta be some explanation as to, to Peter's point, this is a planning guide, but this is what we're assigning to in terms of a budget. So we, there should be some clarity as to how this money's being spent and where it's coming from, and if, and it's not assigned to revenue bonds under the, under the CIP. So this is, this is what I'm trying to get across, is I, I have no clue how this is really being spent, and if you're having an issue with finance, not being able to coordinate between your, the engineering department, utilities, and finance, well, maybe that should be something to put together, because this makes it a lot more work to try and figure out where, where this money's being, coming from and where it's, where it's going.
Hey, Mr. Smith?
Thank you. In the past, we've published the, the firms that are, have been bidding, lack of a better word, on the projects. I see we've dropped that, we've got this, and we've got a, another project that we didn't pull with it, and I would like to see, since, since we're measuring them qualitatively and not quantitatively, we have, it's mentioned in there five different points, that we can see how the firms score out, because engineering is very important to this community with it. We've had a lot of talks about local content there, so would it be possible that, we, we used to include that as part of the packet. So as I look at this packet now, I, I see how it's not, not the scoring, but the methodology, and, and these were the only ones. So, and, and we've got two items now that we've approved, and this isn't the only one.
That's really a comment for probably engineering for contracts and procurement, so in that competitive solicitation process, you'd like to see?
As we did in the past, but I'd, I'd like some counsel feedback, this is my one out of nine request.
I don't think we've historically done that on the...
Well, we have some, yeah.
Usually it's, it's quite some time in the past, you know, as you know.
During, in my last four years.
Mr. Hernandez said this is an amendment, a large amendment. We started doing assessment work and evaluation with a small contract.
Yeah.
So the RFQ actually was published in 2018, but that's information...
But you did that administratively, right?
Pardon me?
You did that administratively, right, and it never came forward, counsel?
Well, counsel was, there was a memo that went out and said who that, who had been selected.
Good.
So that, that's, back at that time, that was the standard procedure. We would list out who, who was ranked most qualified and who was second most qualified, and we would publish that.
And, and that's what I'm referring to.
So Councilman Smith, this is Kim Baker, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We are starting to put those evaluation metrics in all of the new ones that we're doing now.
Well, you beat me to the punch then, Kim, thank you.
So we're, we're starting to do that now. This wasn't the older one, as Jeff mentioned, and that's why you're not seeing it here, but you should be seeing it on all of the newer ones that we've started doing about a year since, from the past year going forward.
Okay, well, well, great. That's it, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, any more, any other comments on item 26? Is there a motion or we need a motion? Need a motion for approval of item 26?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Somebody's seconded.
Mr. Roy.
Yeah, it's Mr. Roy.
All right, there's a motion and a second. You wanna call the roll? Well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion 26 passes. Item 27 was asked to be talked about. Who's doing that?
27.
Let me, 27 and Jeff, is that?
Yeah, Councilman.
You or who?
Richard, you're doing that, Jeff, let me get Jeff, anyways.
Well, I, all, all this is, is, you know, it's a good news item, I didn't want to go through consent, because this is the repaving of Laguna Shores with it. As we all know, Laguna Shores is one of the worst-conditioned streets in here, and, and this process has been long and painful with it, but finally, we're to this last step here, we're getting the official approval, we've got two contractors on it. So Jeff, when are we gonna start? There will be a giant celebration in Flower Bluff and a smaller one on the island for everybody that's taking their kids to Flower Bluff School, where they don't have to drive that cart track we call Laguna Shores Road.
Well, unfortunately, I've gotta say, this will be a first that they have actually celebrated the start of construction. I, I think you might want to wait until we complete the construction.
Yeah, they're gonna, got a lot of complaints coming for rerouting.
Well, the street's not drivable now anyway, so...
This is a very important project, this has been a long time coming, and I know that you've been very patient with us over this.
Well, I hope I haven't been too patient. Well, I've tried lighting fires.
All right, let me retract that. You haven't been very patient, you've been very tactfully impatient. But we've been trying to hurry up every chance we get, and we have, have finally gotten here. So there's three construction contracts that are being awarded by this item, one to Mako Contracting and two to Hoss Anderson Construction, and when these are complete, there's gonna be a little over a four-mile segment of Laguna Shores that has been reconstructed by recent bond projects. So there's a couple of segments that were done on prior bonds, and so this will actually give you a, a, a good roadway from SPID all the way to the southern, southern end.
When can we see some construction? When, when are the suffering citizens of Flower Bluff and the island see those crews out there?
When is, what's the question again?
When are they gonna start?
Okay, so let me explain the process a little bit, and I, I will say once again, I don't think they're starting represents the end of the suffering.
Yeah. You can't get to the end till you get it, start at the start, though.
We're gonna try to do everything we can to limit that, but, so what typically happens after council awards the contract, we'll put together what we call a conformed set of documents, which means all the questions that came during the bid phase are incorporated by the engineer into final documents that are sent, then sent to the contractor for execution and to provide his bonds. We give them two weeks to, to get those back, and after we get those back, those go through execution on our side. Attorneys review the bonds, make sure everything's in order, and then we'll schedule a pre-construction meeting, and then at that time, we'll issue a notice of receipt, and that's when the contractor's clock starts. Now, it's kind of up to him exactly when he moves on the job, and, you know, obviously if he lets too much time go by, we start getting concerned, we start writing letters, but we can't tell him mobilize on this date, but what I can say is I'm, I'm very confident you're gonna see construction out there before the end of the year. I would say it's not gonna be September, it would be stretched to get it in October. I think definitely by November, you're gonna see construction taking place out there.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion second on item 27. Any other comments? Not Ms. Werthe, would you call the roll? I mean, yeah, call the roll on this one.
Okay, so for passage of motion 27, Mayor McComb.
Aye.
Council members Molina.
Aye.
Roy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Barrera.
Aye.
Garza.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
The motion passes.
All right, now, we got, oh, listen, 28 is done, 9, 30, 31, uh, let me add this one. Ms. Juarez?
Yeah.
Item 31.
Oh, yeah, I'm just commenting on 31. I just wanna say thank you, this is, this is the digital divide item, good news item, and Peter, really, it's, it's to thank you for the prompt attention on it and understanding the significance of who this is gonna affect, which is our most vulnerable children. So we've added, obviously, from CCISD and Flower Bluff, TIAP, Telus Menue, Calale, and West Oso, I think those three, and this is all just partnership, and it's doing the right thing, so I'm, I'm just really excited, and I wanna thank, you know, the school, I'm sure, the districts for working with us, but you especially, because you made this really happen when I brought it to your attention, and I think that's the right way to use these funds, you know, in, in partnership with our constituency. So, thank you, just a good news item.
All right, thanks.
Any other comments?
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on item 31, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Item 31 passes. Go to item 32, it's a public hearing, and this is wastewater collection line construction reimbursement agreement with Masagashi Enterprises. Who's gonna handle this one?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Al Raymond, Director of Development Services. Hello, everyone. The proposal before, the ordinance before you is to execute a wastewater collection line construction and reimbursement agreement with Masagashi Enterprises LLC. Thank you, next slide, please. The purpose is to construct a 10-inch wastewater line with the, with also to transfer $110,000 from the sanitary sewer trunk main trust fund to the sanitary sewer collection line trust fund, and to appropriate $133,620 from the sanitary sewer collection line trust fund to reimburse the developer per the agreement. The residential subdivision, the residential development is called the Empire subdivision, which you see there in, outlined in red. It's located, the proposed residential development is located within the city limits along Amertine Road, south of County Road 7B. The planned subdivision is zoned RS6, and it will contain 68 single-family home lots. Next slide, please. There you see the outline of the proposed infrastructure utility improvements. The developer is required to install 100, sorry, 1,360 linear feet of 10-inch wastewater collection line that will extend sanitary sewer services to, to his planned development to the west, northwest, if you will, and provide services to the adjacent properties that are to the southeast. It is, it's important to note that the proposed 10-inch line is in accordance with and identified on the wastewater master plan that was amended in 2006. Next slide, please. Staff recommends approval of the wastewater collection line and construction and reimbursement agreement with Masagashi Enterprises LLC. And I stand by for any questions.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. Was there any public comment written or submitted?
No, sir.
No public comment written or submitted or requested a call?
That's right.
All right, well, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Hernandez, is that for the last time or this time?
It's this time.
Okay.
Okay, I, I reached out to Mr. Raymond on this particular issue. It seemed a little odd to have a 10-inch collection line on the master plan. Is that normal, actually, to have that, Mr. Raymond?
I, I can't really respond to that, I've got my utilities guy here, Gabriel, and like I told you on the phone, he, he would respond to your questions.
Yes, sir, this is Gabriel Hossa, formerly with utilities. I was involved with this when I was at utilities. So master plan, I mean, there's no size limit to the lines that can be put on the master plan. This 10-inch line is gonna serve approximately 100 acres. It'll start at Empire, and then another probably 70 acres to the east of, of this development towards the Oso Bay, so the 10 inches is properly sized for that sub basin.
Okay, so, and we didn't take a look at, to see whether the 8-inch line that's already in the subdivision right next to it would be sufficient for this particular subdivision, for this 160, what is it, 68 house development?
No, sir, that's up to the developer. If he wants to propose an alternative plan that doesn't comply with an existing master plan, he can do that and then go through the master plan amendment process, so we do not initiate any other, you know, alternatives to the developer. If he wants to come with a plan, we'll certainly take a look at it and go from there.
Okay, I, it just, it, it seems like we're adding an extra line here for something that probably doesn't need to in, in spending money, and as I understand it, we're only covering a quarter of the cost for this particular line.
Yes, it's about, it's a little less than 30%. I, I think the developer, the, the 1,360 linear feet is approximately 455 grand, and we're only, he's only allowed to get 133,000 for that, so it's about less than a 30%.
You know, I, maybe it's just me, but I don't know, this, this seems wasteful to, to, to build a line if you don't need to, but we never, but they never even looked at that. Did we encourage them to look at it, did, I mean, or to try and look at attaching to that 8-inch line?
No, sir, you know, this is part of a master plan that's was adopted back in 2006, so if a developer's following the master plan, we usually don't have anything to question.
Well, master plan's not perfect in any way, but I, I, I guess I'm questioning this from the perspective of us from staff, is to make sure that we're not, you know, having unneeded expenses to, to developers if it doesn't need to be, if, we don't need to charge them for that, but I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Mr. Raymond, why are we transferring from the trunk main to the collection line trust fund? What's, what's the reason for that?
Because the sanitary sewer collection line trust fund doesn't have enough funding in it to support this reimbursement.
Okay, and, and following along with that, so I think it'd be helpful to us at council if we knew what those fund balances were, so what you're saying, we've exhausted one, so we're robbing Peter to pay Paul?
Right, but keep in mind, we've done this in, in my year, and we've done it several times, it's in the UD... It's, and the UDC allows for money to be transferred between the four trust funds so that certain reimbursement agreements can be supported.
Okay, I, I guess it would be helpful to us if, if we had the trust fund balances when you bring something like, like this to us.
That's a good, that's a good point, and we'll start doing that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
America, can I say something else?
Sure.
In light, in light of the fact that we don't have funding in the trust funds, it seems like we would have looked at alternatives, even if it's in the master plan. I mean, you could look at, see whether or not this is a viable alternative, and it might even save the, the developer money. I just, it, it seems like we should have at least done a little bit of work on that.
I understand what you're saying, Councilman, but like, like Gabriel said, if developers following the master plan, if the master plan was a public process, all of the questioning that occurred, occurred then. So when someone makes a proposal to, to align with the master plan, we usually don't comment on that. But also, keep in mind that the trust funds are set up to allow for money to transfer from one bucket to the other, realizing that even some buckets could be light. So this is how we keep development moving, if you will.
All right, well, thank you. One, just clarification in there, and maybe I misunderstood it. The question was, you know, a 10-inch line versus an 8-inch line, and you're saying that the developer is voluntarily doing this oversight?
It's, it's, it is his choice. I apologize. He just simply followed the master plan. Yes, it is, it is an option to see if his development, which is 68 homes, could be served by the existing infrastructure, but he chose not to do that.
Okay, well, basically, what I'm saying is, we're not, we're not imposing additional cost on the developer. He's doing it on his own.
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion and second on item 31?
Is it, this is two readings, correct?
32?
Yes, that's two readings.
Okay, I, if we can, I, I don't mind moving forward with this one, but if we can reach out to the developer and give them that option to look at that 8-inch, maybe you could save us money and save them money.
I mean, you can go ask him. Moses is pretty smart. He hasn't gotten where he is now.
Well, this, this isn't Moses, this is his uncle George.
Well, they all must be pretty smart. But anyway, we can ask him. He's got a second reading.
Yep.
Is there a motion for item number 32? Who's ma, anybody make a motion? If not, I'll make it. Anybody want a second?
I move for approval.
All right, there's a motion and second on item 32. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Arrogance authorizing acceptance appropriation of grant to the WIC fund. Surely, this can't be controversial. Is there a motion?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, we have one executive session, and I need to get my legislative prescribed language to get to our closed session. Do we have it here, Ms. Werthe? Okay, we're down to item 34. And it says, "The council will go into executive session on item 34 per the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071. We will return when it is completed." So, we go to executive session. So, do we, we just turn the, all the stuff off and stay in here? We go?